Excused, so I'll be chairing tonight's meeting. Councilmember Henkel is also excused this evening and councilmembers Anderson and Delgado will be joining virtually. Agendas for study sessions, including concept reviews, can be found on by visiting Broomfield's website at www.broomfield.org. Members of the public may attend tonight's meeting and future study sessions in person at the George D.CRO City and County Building, City Council Chambers located at 1 Disco Home Drive, or watch live on Channel 8 and through video streaming on Broomfield's website. Our agenda this evening includes one study item. The public may participate in public comment this evening, either in person or through our call-in service. Visit our broomfield.org/councilmeetings webpage for step-by-step instructions on using the call-in service. Public comment will be limited to 90 minutes total. The first 1 through 15 participants in the queue have 3 minutes to speak. The next 16 to 25 participants in the queue have 2 minutes to speak. If time remains, the next 26-plus participants in the queue have 1 minute to speak. For our heart of hearing residents present, we have wireless headsets available through our AV team in the back of the council chambers. Our only item this evening is the second of two study sessions where individual department representatives are in hand to answer questions regarding their 2026 budgets. Tonight's discussion will include the following departments: Assessor, Attorney, City Manager's Office, Communications and Engagement, Courts Development, Diversity Equity Inclusion, Economic Vitality, Finance, Information Technology, Parks, Recreation, Senior Services, and Police. Included in the staff memo were links to the 2026 proposed budget page on the Broomfield website, as well as links to all the department presentation videos. Following these study sessions, a public hearing on the proposed budget will be held during the city council meeting on October 14, 2025. The proposed budget is then scheduled for formal consideration and final adoption on October 28, 2025, at the regularly scheduled city council meeting. Public comment will be taken at both of those meetings. I'll turn it over to Manager Hoffman to start off tonight's discussion.
Mr. Casey is going to kick us off this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And as you mentioned previously, tonight marks the second of two study sessions regarding Broomfield's 2026 proposed budget. This budget is particularly significant as it represents five years of our community's evolution, transitioning from a period of substantial growth to that of a maturing community. Due to minimal increases in sales tax revenues and reduction in property tax revenues, we're strategically prioritizing our budgets in '26. Three main topics mandates, from federal and state requirements, obligations from our contractual commitments or agreements, and critical needs essential for public health, safety, and operations. This approach ensures a sustained focus on public safety and essential services while still achieving the 20% reserve for enhanced financial stability. Notable highlights of the budget are the new police facility, the development of our first organizational strategic plan, the implementation of a new enterprise resource planning or ERP software, an updated comprehensive plan, and the issuance of bonds for critical infrastructure such as water tanks and wastewater treatment facilities. The second half of our department head team is here tonight to answer any questions, and we would also like to specifically acknowledge and appreciate our community for their engagement in this process as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now proceed with public comments. If any residents are using the call-in service, they should indicate their desire to speak by pressing star nine to raise their hand. We will start with in-person comments. If anyone would like to be heard, please come to the podium, state your name and neighborhood for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
I'm Dan Sonnison, live in Eagle Trace North. So I've talked to a few of the city council people about the situation there and the committee that's also working on it, and it sounds like there's maybe some progress. And so that's good. And I'd just like to ask for the continued support of the city. Again, this is central part of Broomfield, and we want to keep it nice and hopefully keep it as either a partial golf course, open space, or whatnot. And I think if it did come down to any kind of development, it would be very strongly opposed. So just want the city to continue to think about that and support that. I know there's been a lot of issues with money spent on the Broomfield Event Center, and I know there's issues with the whole downtown situation that's kind of dragged on for quite a while, it seems like, which I don't know any of the details on. But anyway, I just want to, hopefully the city can continue to try to support that and then that we can keep that a nice area in the center of Broomfield. Thank you.
Annie Bryson, Eagle Trace North. Good evening, Mayor, student council members and staff. Thank you for your time. As a resident of Eagle Trace North, I am urging you to support the city's purchase of water rights for the golf course reservoirs near Broomfield High School. According to the Broomfield Voice, protecting water resources is a growing concern, and inaction here would have real consequences. If these reservoirs dry up and space becomes a fire hazard, environmental loss, and a public eyesore. But beyond that, studies show nearly nearby homeowners could lose 10 to 20% of their property value and potentially lose tens of millions in equity and up to $600,000 per year in property tax revenue, much of which funds Broomfield services. This is a clear, critical need under your budget framework, and I am a smart financial decision. If we can invest $80 million in a new police station, we can absolutely protect the assets that we already have. Please act now to preserve this land, protect residents, and secure our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in person that would like to speak? All right. Next is public comment from individuals joining via phone. Please press star nine to indicate your desire to provide public comment. Once called to speak, please state your first and last name and neighborhood for the record. And we do not have anybody, so we will continue with the meeting. To keep the discussion focused, I'm going to ask for questions and comments from the departments in the order they appear on the staff memo, starting with the assessor. Does any member of council have any questions or comments? And we'll have the assessor come down and please introduce yourself, and we'll go to questions and comments.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, councilmembers. Jay Yamashita, assessor.
All right. Any questions or comments for the assessor's office? Councilmember Lim.
You noted in the 2026 objectives that you will be planning for the 2027 appraisals. Could you preview that? Do you have, do you foresee good news, bad news, otherwise?
So, right now, my team is currently going through that sales analysis and converting sales, so right now I don't have any information pertaining to 2027 valuation.
Could you remind us, what is the evaluation period for those reappraisals?
So, for the 2025, we looked at an analysis from July 1 of 2022 through June 30 of 2024 to set values for 2025 and 2026.
And those windows are set by the state statute? Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And one of the key initiatives was a upcoming retirements, including a succession plan and planning for impacts of the team. Could you just go briefly, go, what is the plan?
Yeah, well, the plan currently is that we foresee that we're going to have possibly one to two retirements next year. That is what I'm understanding per the staff members that are retiring. So I'm trying to put together a succession plan to fill those two positions that are pretty key positions within our department.
And can you just remind the council, how many positions do you have in your team?
We have nine, including myself.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You bet.
Councilmember Cohen.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor Tim. Just to follow up real quickly on Councilmember Nguyen's question, with retirements and considering that we expect the budget to tighten, is there a special evaluation process every time, whether a position needs to be filled?
There is. Mr. Yamashita, I'll take that one. Yes, thanks for the question, Councilmember Cohen. We have a, depending upon the position, a tiered approach for the scrutiny with which all vacancies, when they become vacant, that we go through to assess, again, critical mandate, obligation, and/or other. I don't want to say it's a time-intensive process, but it certainly is a budget optimization process that we will move through, not only because the budget is tightened, but just because it's good governance.
All right. And I did want to ask related to, you had mentioned a online appeal software. Is that a new process? Will the appeals process be different after the '27 assessments than they were in '25?
So, we implemented the 2025 online appeal process for 2025.
Be the same process?
Correct. The appeals will still stay the same. We really, we had great success, and we appreciate you guys allowing us to give us a process where we can streamline that process, which is going to help our property owners. We basically had 60% of our appeals for 2025 through the online portal. So from my perspective, that was a very good first year for us, for the response that we got from our property owners.
So, what were the outcomes in terms, was it easier for your office or easier for residents?
I think it was easy for everybody. I think, you know, the process on the front line, the opportunity for our property owners to see the comparable sales on a map, to me, was a huge plus for us. Giving that visual effect for our property owners is great from my perspective. And like I said, I think we had great success at 60% for our first year. I hope that that increases as we move forward.
The 60% just because they wanted to use it? They weren't, nobody's required to do the online?
Yeah, so we basically, to break down, you know, the numbers, we had 509 appeals. We had basically 15 that were emailed to us. We had 51 in person that were brought in. We had 126 by regular mail, and then we had 317 through the online portal.
But perhaps awareness will be higher next time.
Hopefully, like I said, we tried to roll out with the good communication through our communication department to get that out, and then we put everything on our notice of values as well.
Right, terrific. Thank you much.
Thank you. Councilmember Ward.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just one question. Earlier in the summer, there was a resident that emailed about paying property taxes on a monthly basis and having the city and county of Broomfield go with a third party. I think it's escrow taxes is what they mentioned in their email. Finance, I know, is the one that responded to that email, but I was curious on your end from the assessor's perspective, if you guys are partnering with finance to see if that's something we can implement either next year or in the coming years.
And so I will have that go to the finance department. So what we do, the assessors department itself, all we do is we create the valuation. The difference being is then it just goes through the process of the assessment level, and then by the mill levy, and that produces the tax notice that the treasurer provides. So I'm not privy to exactly what we're going to do with that. I'm sure I'll hear from them once they solidify and move forward on what they want to do.
Mr. Clark is standing right behind you. Something to add, Mr. Clark?
Sorry.
Yeah, Councilmember Ward, we have looked into that. That is something we plan on doing, and we're very close to implementing that now. So it was a great, it was just rolled out recently to some of the counties. We're thankful that that resident gave us that recommendation, and we are moving forward with that.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Leslie.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Will the new ERP have any impact on your operation?
The new ERP?
Yeah.
We don't do as much within that system, per se, except for basically our basic accounting as far as the finances, financials that go for the department.
So there may be some benefit to you?
Sure. Hopefully. We'll see as we get further into the process.
Are there any state changes since the last appraisal that are impacting your operation?
No, we have not heard of any currently that have come down since we have last had the discussion.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from my council colleagues? I have a couple. So I'm excited to see that succession planning is a big conversation within your department. You know, succession planning, efficiency, performance-based budgeting, those are all elements that are occurring within the assessor's office. One of the pieces that was mentioned in the memo was the required licensure classes for licensed assessors. I assume those are classes, one, those are classes that are required for our licensed assessors, but also are those classes being paid for by CCOB, or are these individuals having to pay for those renewal classes on their own?
No, I budget enough money so that my appraisers do not have to pay that out of their own pocket.
Excellent. That was going to be my next question, which was to ensure that, I know that we have a drop in our, in terms of our training to travel budget for staff, and I wanted to make sure that those classes were still being covered by.
Yeah, and we're going to try and do the best that we can, maybe not go, maybe do more remote learning instead to get their continuing education hours to keep their licenses.
Okay, that sounds good. I'm happy to see the appeals online portal being utilized, as Councilmember Cohen brought up, utilized by 65% of the users. It does mean that there's 35% of users that aren't using this system, and it seems that this system is much more efficient, both for the residents as well as for the city and county. So are there roadblocks for the users utilizing this system, or is it just new and it'll take some time? I'm just trying to figure out, how do we get those other 35% to use this system, since it is so much more efficient?
And the hope is, over time and word of mouth starts spreading, the fact of the ease of it all, I think will eventually, as people get in and they start looking at it, they'll see how easy it is, and I hope that that will transpire into better numbers as far as online appeal portal.
Okay, so we didn't hear from those 35%, whether or not there's barriers to utilizing this system, or there are certain appeals that have to go through.
Right.
And that all 35% of those could utilize this.
Right, and they could. The difference being is, like, as I stated, we received, certain people brought it in because that was the old-school way of doing it, and mailing it as well. So those are still in place. The difference being is, with enough communication, hopefully we get this out, and more people will utilize the online portal. We were very successful with all of our agents, as far as our commercial property agents, they used the portal, all of them did.
Okay, well, I think it kind of is that same, like, for our car registration renewal system, you know, going through the online portal for that, it's very easy, so, you know, more people know about it, more people that'll utilize that.
Correct.
So hopefully this follows that same trend. The last question I have is, you know, speaking of property taxes, there's been a lot of changes to property taxes over the last few years. Can you remind us who sets those rates, who sets the valuation, and all of those nuances for where we are today?
We set the values, but we are governed by the Department of Property Taxation, who tells us exactly the methodologies that we should use to set those values. Everything that we do is by statute. So as far as that's concerned, we use their methodologies to set the values. Everybody has to understand, we do everything in a mass appraisal level, so to look at each individual property is next to impossible for us. So that's why we use residential properties, we can only use the market approach, which is a sales comparison approach. And that is the only way by statute that we can value residential properties in the state of Colorado.
And when you say the statute, that's the Colorado statute?
Correct.
Correct. And so we have the appeals process, should commercial or residential owners feel that their valuation wasn't done correctly, because as you said, we can't go down to that per property, you know, point. So there is that appeals property piece and point. And so then the other piece, our mill levies are set, and we don't have the ability to change those, is that correct?
That is correct. We have no say in the mill levies that are set.
Without vote of the people, of course.
Of course, when it comes to the city and county Broomfield, for sure.
Excellent. Well, thank you for all those answers. Looks like we have another question from Councilmember Ward.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. When Councilmember Leslie was asking you about things that had come up in this current legislative session, I wanted to ask, have you or any of your peers across the state of Colorado been hearing any rumors or ideas that might be coming up in the future legislative session regarding particularly your office or just property taxes in general?
No, we have not heard, surprisingly enough. We haven't heard anything through the grapevine, surprisingly enough.
Either that's really good or really bad.
Let's see.
Councilmember Ward, just for council and for the community as a reminder, residential property tax rates are set by the state, so our methodology is set by statute, but those rates that initially were 7.1% for residential, 29% for commercial, have ratcheted down in the last two years. So when you have a decreased valuation, when your home is worth less, and the property tax rate, which is set by the legislature, is also less, that's one of the things in the 2026 budget, is a decrease between $6 to $8 million. That will be consistent for Broomfield. There will, there's not going to be a, to your point, of not only a decrease in the rate, but certainly not an increase either. So solving for that long-term puts us in those conversations about scrutinizing the budget even further than we normally have. So I know that it's a misnomer that Broomfield has some type of influence or oversight on those rates, which we do not, residential nor commercial. So the commercial has gone from 29%. It will go to 27%, and then it's on track to go to 25%. So while those rates don't seem a percentage, doesn't seem significant, the cumulative effect certainly is. So what Broomfield does set is the mill levy. Our sales tax rate nor our mill levy has ever been increased since we've become a city and county, and that is the one lever that we do have control over. The other two regarding property tax, we do not.
Okay, I just wanted to ask that question. Thank you.
Excellent. No other commenters on this, so thank you so much for being here. Next, we have the attorneys' reports.
Good evening, councilmembers. Nancy Rogers, the city and county attorney, and here with me tonight is Hat Gilbert, the deputy city and county attorney.
Thank you so much for introducing yourself and your team.
Thank you, it's good to meet you all. I think it's different, you know, when I'm sitting over there.
That's right, that's right. It's a different venue. More so, thank you for introducing your team. Any council questions, comments for this department? Councilmember Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just wanted to ask you about risk management. If I remember correctly, that you took that over. So what is the process? Are you going through to have each department identify their risks, their areas of risk, and what ramifications might be if something happens, or how to prevent that or reduce the risk?
Thank you, Councilmember Cohen. You're right, this is now the end of year two, when risk management, risk and safety management moved over to the city attorney's office, and a year into workers' comp moving over. So Allison Meldahl is our risk and safety manager, and one of her main goals is to analyze the data. Now, two years in, we have good data where we can see where risks, where our risks are, our level of expenses tied to that risk. What she does right now is twofold. Knowing that, for example, police, with our biggest fleet, and also a lot of physical interaction, she meets regularly with the command staff to talk about the claims that have come in, ways that we can maybe mitigate some of those claims. Like, we're not going to be able to stop incidents that happen with the pursuit, but maybe we can stop an officer from backing into a fence. She's also doing the same type of analysis for parks and rec, looking at seasonal employees, which we saw over the summer, is an area where we have some more claims. Another thing that she's doing is reestablishing the safety committee, and the safety committee has reps from most of the departments, definitely the big departments. And they're not only looking at the data too and trying to find ways where we can mitigate some of those claims and reduce our risk in those areas, but also do some proactive education on. We're seeing a lot of sprain lower body claims in workers' comp. What can we do with our employees to help remind them of safe movements, partner with wellness, to increase the health of our staff so they're not getting injured if they fall? So some of, those are some of the ways she's trying to assess our risk and reduce it. We are fortunate in Broomfield that our claim numbers are low, our mod rating for workers' comp is very good.
I was asking, since I've been through the risk management process, now I was in communications, so it's not people running into thing trees or police issues, but like, I would need, I was asked to identify, you know, reputational harm and what risks was there and what my response might be. I had control of the website, so if the website disappeared, what was the risk of that happening? What could I do to mitigate the damage if the website disappeared? Those kind of things at each office, and everybody in that unit had to determine what they did and what would happen if that went away, or how much of a risk was it of being a, you know, a cyber attack, like, for instance, a website or a technological problem? I was just curious if the departments were going through that. So not necessarily legal claim risk, but just risk to operations, to their operational process, you know, if they can't, if the assessor can't assess, et cetera.
Right. We haven't got to that level, although that would be one of our long-range goals, because right now we are sort of tying our assessment and our work on the claims data that comes in, either through workers' comp or property and casualty claims, and trying to directly deal with those departments, which are our biggest ones. I do, I do want to address cyber, though. Shortly after Allison got hired, she worked with the IT department to get us cyber insurance, because that was an area where we knew we had to get better coverage in that area, because we didn't have sufficient coverage in case every, we got hacked or we had a ransom attack, something like that. I do think that department level, what would happen if your operations had to move full remote, especially like my office or the assessor is a good example, we haven't done that yet.
I think it was a helpful exercise to realize where, if something you do every day and you don't think about, suddenly it had to go away, or was attacked, or what risk would occur if something bad happened, I think is a useful exercise if that can be incorporated. Thank you.
Got it.
Thank you. Councilmember Lim.
On your 2026 plan, it says, implement a structured system to manage legal requests, assignments, and progress. Is 2026 the beginning of brainstorming about this? Is this a end goal? It's only going to take a year? Do you need software for this, or I was just interested?
It's the, thank you for that question, Councilmember Lim. It's the beginning of the brainstorming process. We did, a few years ago, we looked into getting legal software, and it didn't seem to fit for our operation, and also the expense really wasn't worth the benefit. Other departments that are internal-facing have a ticketing system, such as HR and IT. We've looked at that a little bit. It also doesn't seem to fit. As council knows, I think council does this with me, just like the departments do it with the attorneys. They just call them and say, hey, I was working on something, I'm wondering about this. So it doesn't really work well for a ticketing system. So it is the start of the brainstorming process of how can we track what we're doing, and how can I also use that as an assessment tool to make sure the work is divided equally, or at least equitably, among my staff? I mean, everybody feels good in their assignments now, they report back to me, but it's very anecdotal at this point. So we're looking at, is there something we could actually put into place? So yeah, unfortunately, it's the start of the brainstorming. Okay, thank you. I do think, I do want to say by the end of this year, I do want to have some sort of tracking, even it is good old-fashioned spreadsheet or monthly reports. Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Nguyen.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and Attorney Rogers. I just have a really brief question. In the performance measures part of the proposed budget, it was discussed that there was, you know, certain, about 2,224 adult and juvenile cases were processed. My question is, would your team be able to account for potentially more cases in the future, or like, because maybe there's more crime or something next year, who knows? How would your team, I guess, address a spike in cases?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Lim. We, Nguyen, excuse me, I sort of did a mix of Lim and Nguyen. We utilize, for about 70% of our prosecution, we use outside counsel, and they work the entire afternoon. Right now, our dockets are about two hours in that afternoon, so we have space to have about two more hours in the docket. And this is a timely question, because we talked about, council knows that street racing is an issue, and we're looking at potential ordinances that we can enact, which would result in more tickets coming into municipal court, and how that would impact my shop as well as the court shop. And knowing that we have that space in our dockets, especially on the traffic docket day, I think we'll be fine to handle it without having to add additional staff.
Great, no, I appreciate the, you know, the clarification, and of course, you know, aligning us all of the processes. Thank you, Attorney Rogers. It's Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for this department? See you none. Thank you for being here.
Can I, oh wait, no, I say.
Yeah, you need to say. Oh, so funny, so funny. Oh, so funny, so funny.
Attorney Rogers has set the precedence for coming down to the podium. And so Dan and I were doing Rochambeau, should we or shouldn't we? And we've decided, no. Dan is going to be doing the, from the, from the dais. Mr. Casey?
Thank you, Dan Casey, Deputy City and County Manager. The CMO crew is made up of 16 FTE. That includes our emergency management team, our strategic initiatives, our CAC desk, and our economist. Our budget this year is about $3.7 million proposed, and I will be here for any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you very much. Questions and comments for the city manager's office? Councilmember Lim?
I was interested in the process to implement the FEMA mandated hazardous mitigation plan update that's coming up. It was, it was, it reflects an slight increase in the budget, according to the video and the PowerPoint.
Yeah, so that, that does represent the largest increase to our CMO budget this year. It's about $75,000. And Clay Shuck, our Director of Operations, can answer that more succinctly.
Good evening, Clay Shuck, Director of Operations. Thank you for that question, Councilmember Lim. Every four years, we need to update our hazardous mitigation plan with the changes that are going on. And we always need a consultant. And with the current changes going on with FEMA, we really felt like it was important to get a consultant on board when we're updating this next plan. So we will hopefully start in 2026. It'll end sometime in 2027. And we'll bring, there's a number of approvals that have to occur before it comes to you as council's a final approval. So we're hoping with that cadence, we'll be able to get that done and get ready to go for 2028.
Is this the first time we've used a consultant for this?
No, ma'am. We've used a consultant, I think, every time we've done his hazardous mitigation plan.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other council questions, comments? Councilmember Ward?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just one question so far. In terms of emergency management, I know, going forward...
Get your steps in.
Do we feel confident that the level of staffing we have in emergency management is sufficient for the risks that are, the potential risks that Broomfield is exposed to, just being in the area that we are, when we compare ourselves to other cities and counties across, or just neighboring us, they tend to have, I think, a larger emergency management department, if I'm correct. So I just want to kind of have a discussion about that.
Sure. Thank you for that question, Councilmember Ward. When you're looking at the jurisdictions, though, to not only the west, but north of us and the south of us, those are huge counties. So a lot of them are more than double to three times our size. And the staffs pretty much represent that. So directly to your question, yes, having those two emergency response coordinators, they're able to divide up the work, and they're able to successfully make sure that they're implementing the plans that we need to do and keep up on those plans. So at the current moment, with the addition of our volunteer incident support teams, I feel like we have enough staffing within emergency management.
Okay. And just a clarification is, I would hope that we are cross collaborating with other communities surrounding us when it comes to emergency management.
Absolutely. So we sit on a number of committees where we do that, and through the U.S.C. and the North Central Region, and just also the various working committees that are out there. So we do have a cybersecurity event coming up. That's a cross-functional team with many of the counties and cities across Northeast Denver, so.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I'll, I have a couple of questions. So in the memo, it talked about the project administration and community support have been consolidated into executive management and include the personnel for strategic initiatives and governmental affairs. I'm curious with the committee support, I, I assume that that's our local boards and commissions? Is that correct, our local boards and committees?
Yeah, Mayor Protem, that is correct.
Okay, so with, with that line, am I, does this mean a portion of those staff liaisons that are, are the liaisons for those boards and committees? Or is a portion of that coming out of CMO? Or is the full expense coming out of that department? So for instance, library board, right? You have a library staff person that is the liaison to the library board. Is that portion of that coming out of the city manager's office, or is that all coming out of the library?
That's all coming out of the library. So wherever that staff resides, that department is paying that salary. We do pick up some of those other expenses, meals, different things like that. So that's, and then we have support, administrative support from the CMO for those boards and commissions as well.
Okay, excellent. That was going to be my second question, so thank you. The, another question I have, so state legislation and, and council lobbying organizations. I think that over the last couple of years, we've really efficiently streamlined council's legislative process, while also ensuring that we're mindful of staff's time. Are we going to continue, I mean, is the plan in this budget to continue that same process that we've had? Or is there budget to change that?
There, there is no budget to add, enhance, expand scope, or develop anything new. So we were confident in the approach that we took last year, that we've really, it's the, the fifth year that we've had edits to the legislative approach, and we think we have the secret sauce.
Okay, excellent. And then, you know, this, this also includes council's budget within this. So I think that, you know, as you mentioned, the, you know, the organizations that we're a part of, you know, I think that that's on council to ensure that we are effectively looking at those to see which ones we get the most out of, in terms of that, those budget dollars. But I also would suggest, you know, to my colleagues, that we take a closer look at the travel and training budget, as staff has made significant cuts to their travel and training budgets. If, if, if we don't make any adjustments to those budgets, I would again suggest that we restrict all travel for 2026 to within the state of Colorado, so that we are most, most mindful of those dollars, just as staff is for their travel and training. Let's see. Councilmember Ward?
Mayor Protem, when you mentioned travel and training, I, another question popped into my mind. So thank you for reminding me. In my time, in my tenure on councils, no city council has ever exceeded the budget that's allocated for travel and training. Since that occurs, and we have to roll over those funds each year, what happens with those rolled over funds? Where do they just go back in as part of your reallocation for city council? Do we put it somewhere else? Kind of walk me through that process of what does that look like?
They go back into the general fund and then reallocated based on priorities. The amounts that staff sets aside for council budgets for individual travel and training, then essentially, it's the same amount every year until council either decreases it or increases it. But the, it, it doesn't necessarily roll over. It goes back to the general fund budget.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for city manager's office? Seeing none. Thank you very, very much for being here. Next is Communications Engagement. Please come down and introduce yourselves and your team who are here.
Good evening, councilmembers. Julie Story, Director of Communications and Engagement. And I have my director, Deputy Director Tiffany Harden here with me tonight as well.
Excellent. Thank you for being here. Any questions or comments for this department? Councilmember Cohen?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I wanted to, this follow-up on my, not my favorite topic, but I've dealt with it for years, is websites. Can you talk about what the upgrades you're focusing on and what we might expect to see? And what particular problems you're maybe most addressing?
Yes, we're going through our both external and internal websites at the moment. It's an ongoing process, so we're trying to do this in phases, because obviously, we can't do everything at one time. Really, for the community, it's addressing on the external website, trying to get that more externally focused. So right now, there's several areas of our website that are more structured as we are structured as an organization, which doesn't necessarily ring in the way that a resident might search for something or look for something if they're going through navigation or something like that. So we're, we're looking at that to both improve a lot of the user interface aspects. We've, we've noticed that in the last year, we have more residents, we've gone to now over 50% of people who look at our website are doing it on a mobile device versus a desktop. So there are several things that we can make improvements on within the web structure, so that when you look at it on a phone or a tablet, it's a little bit better of a user experience, as well as just the organization of it as a whole.
Have you looked for or budgeted for things like UX testing? And one, and two, the search function itself, which is always frustrating, but there's greater tools now to try and get people to what they're actually looking for, because it's a common problem that you search for something and get something that's four years old. And you don't know that necessarily upfront, and you're looking at bad information.
Right. So, no, we do not have anything budgeted right now for UX testing or anything like that. However, I will say that we're trying, as I said, we're, we're doing this in a phased approach. And so if you, you may have noticed in our document that it stated that we had quite a few pages that we've been able to go through and consolidate or get rid of, because there was old content out there. So, so really trying to bring it down to the most important, the most relevant, the most current information, as well as going through, you know, it's one of those things, right? That you start, you have the space. So you start putting things in your cupboards or in your closets, and, and it just starts to become bigger and bigger, and you forget to go back and clean that out. And so that's some of what we're doing in this process also, is we have a document area. And a lot of that, when documents might get replaced, they weren't replacing them, you were deleting one. So it, it just increases the number. So part of that is, there's a lot of documents and things out there that we're trying to cull through and get rid of. And again, just have the most recent version of that out there, so that that will then, in fact, then enhance our search functionality within the website itself.
Well, I would, having done this several, many times, I would encourage you to look into user experiences. It's not terribly expensive, but it's usually pretty enlightening to have people outside your organization. You set them a task, and it's videotaped, and you watch how they would talk themselves through it and see if they can find what you're looking for. And it can be, it's also frustrating, because you build a website and you think you put it obviously right there, and they go right around it and try and find it six other ways. So, but it's, I think it's a useful investment to do that. And I think it's useful to invest in a really robust search function. And I know eventually chat, which is how, people are looking for things, are just going to ask chat to find it for them rather than navigate anymore. So, so I encourage you to do that, because I do hear from residents, I'm, but you always hear, they can't find it. And it's, as the owner of a website, it's frustrating, because you know it's there, but it's always a struggle. I also wanted, the community survey identified, I think, 18 different sources that people were getting information, where they were going to 18 different sources for information about the city, which of course is pretty impossible to feed 18 different, to find. Have we looked at how we can better reach people in the, as things are evolving, and we don't longer have a really high penetration from a newspaper of how we're going to get people better informed of what the city's doing, what the council's doing, et cetera?
Absolutely. So there's a couple of different things that we're working on. I'll go back to the website again. One of the, the things that we're trying to do is leverage some of the tools that we already have within the website. There are many tools that we have within our web system that allows for residents to subscribe to different notifications, whether that be a calendar, or an agenda, or news feeds, or alerts, or things like that, depending on what is most useful to them. And so we're going to leverage that as we're, as we're doing some reorganization and cleaning up of the site. So that will be one of those. We also did a, a look earlier this year and, and have kind of gone through that. For instance, putting a little bit more advertising dollars into our Broomfield magazine, because that was one of the things that we were hearing, especially as you mentioned, with the newspapers, that we have more residents looking to, especially for some of that event information and those kinds of things, hearing directly from, from the city and county. So looking to kind of do some of those things. There's a lot of those, though, when you say there's 18. There are a lot of them that are useful to have, because we're trying to meet people where they are. So when you talk about social media platforms, eight, of that 18, six of those might be six different social media platforms that we didn't group into one grouping, right? There's six different ones. But the people who use Twitter aren't necessarily the same people that use Instagram or Facebook. And so we want to make sure that we're getting the information out there where they might be seeing it.
Big thing. I'll let our Gen Z members address that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments for this department? I just want to just mention that the, the real-time non-emergency notifications for large events and facilities, you know, moving that to text, I, I thought was, was a great thing. You know, especially for Broomfield days. I, I mean, walking around with numerous people. I'd get a text, and they'd get a text, and we'd all get information very quickly. I, I think that 4th of July was the same way, where we would get the information about delays for fireworks, or, you know, that, the things that were happening. I thought that was, that was really great. With that addition to, to having text messages, how are we seeing this impact older forms of communication, like mailers, you know, emails, social media like Facebook? How, what, what impact are we seeing with that?
It really won't have much of an impact, because for that particular thing, when we're talking about those real-time alerts. Let me, let me back up here also and remind everybody, those real-time alerts do not take the place of your emergency alerts. So we have the Lookout Alert Emergency Mass Notification System that all of our residents need to be subscribed to to get those. That is also running at the same time. We talked about emergency management a little bit earlier. Our emergency management team works on that for each of those events, and we have that geo-fence. So whether you're subscribed to Lookout Alert or not, if you're in that area and there's an emergency, you're going to get that Lookout Alert. We will be the bonus on those real-time alerts. Those real-time alerts are more of those, hey, don't forget, this stage is starting over here, or the dock dogs are going. And like you mentioned, at the fireworks, maybe we have a delay or, or something like that. But so many of the other processes won't be affected at all by that, because they're, they need to be done in different ways. This was just a new way that we looked at to try and do to provide, especially at those larger events. We hear a lot from residents that I can't make a call, because there's so many cell phones in that. It's hard to get, or if it was on social, you had to connect into the thing and log into your Facebook or whatever you're looking at. If you subscribe to those alerts, you're getting it via text message. That's going to get to you quicker than any other way that you can do it.
Right. And if we want to sign up for those text alerts, we go through the same information. I think Be in the Loop, is that, is that where we sign up for that?
We have information in Be in the Loop, but we have a page out there called Notify Me on the website. In any of those big events, if anybody is interested in signing up for those, we also have it for the Bay. The Bay uses that during the summer, because as we know, here in Colorado, so many times, weather comes in fast and furious. And within 10 minutes, we have to say, oh, lightning, we got to, you know, clear the area. And so the Bay is using that. We'll be expanding that as we get into next year for other, some of the other events and possibly other facilities. If you go to any one of those webpages, it has it right on there that gives you instructions with a link on where you go, how to sign up. Pretty easy. You just choose, I want it via email or text message, and the system just runs you through the process.
Well, thank you for all that information. Any other questions, comments for this department? Seeing none. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Next up is Courts. Judge Bachman, thank you for being here. Please introduce yourself and any members of your staff that are here.
Okay. Hi, Mayor Protem, members of council. My name's Amy Bachman. I am with the municipal court, and I'm it.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much for being here. Are there any questions or comments for this department? Councilmember Lim?
I was interested in your point that you would like to develop an electronic court check-in process. Is that internally being developed? Are you doing that through a consultant, or what's the process?
Yes. So we already have our Broomfield Municipal Court computer system that keeps track of all of our cases, works with the city attorney's office. And as part of that, as part of the future development with that same system, we're working to develop that check-in process. And it would be an opportunity for people to come into the court, use an iPad or something like an iPad, find their name, click that they're present. And then that way, the city attorney would know when they've checked in, what order they checked in, and be able to call their case in a much, much more efficient way. So that's already being developed.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Well, I'll ask my question, and then I'll do another check with council. So the Navigator program is still fairly new. I think that, that you've put a lot of things in place. Can you give us a brief summary of what the Navigator program is, and perhaps even a story of the impact, the positive impact to this program for the city and county of Broomfield?
Awesome question.
Awesome question. Thank you. So the Navigator program is a program that has now been in place for about the last three years. We have Erin Zabody, who is our court navigator. She came from the state probation department. Her role is to connect individuals, both who are in the court system and who are not in the court system, with resources in the community. So that can be anything from mental health treatment, substance abuse treatment, employment, education, food, housing, medical care, whatever the individual needs. No judgment. They come in, they sit down with her, and they put together a plan. There are several stories, success stories, big and small, of what Erin's been able to do with these individuals. She's been able to secure IDs for individuals that are living on the streets that can't get employment, because they can't get their birth certificate, or their social security card, or their driver's license. And that's the first step in making progress towards securing employment, securing benefits, securing housing. So there are people, I would say probably, and I'm just estimating here, five a week that come in and sit down with her, and she's able to get those documents for them. Sometimes it's a struggle that they don't have a mailing address. So even if you are able to fill out the application for your social security card, or to get a copy of your birth certificate, there's nowhere to have it mailed. So we figured that out. We have a P.O. box. They get mailed to the courts, and then they come back in and visit Erin. Once they get that document, once they establish that trust with her, then they start working on employment, and food, and housing. One of the many success stories, a bigger success story that I can share with you from the last year is a young man who, his family is currently residing in Anthem. An incredible young man who had a very incredible future ahead of him. He was actually going to MIT. He was getting a mathematics degree. And he started struggling with substance abuse issues, and that triggered some significant mental health issues. And the family was doing what they could to support him, but ultimately, he was unable to reside in the home. He was living in the parks here in Broomfield and really, really struggling. Wound up in front of the municipal court, had some trust issues with the court, which many of the people that we see do, and I can understand why. But we were able to establish trust with him, build a relationship. He did work with the court navigator. Ultimately, we were able to secure a spot for him in sober living. And now he calls the navigator on a regular basis just to give her an update. He's moved out to California. He's still in sober living. He has a job. His family comes by to tell us how he's doing. His father dropped by a card several months ago just to give us an update and to say thank you. But again, this is a young man who really could have gone two different paths. And we were able to address both his substance abuse issues, his mental health issues, and he's now in a much healthier place. And again, the fact that he just contacts the court just to give us an update, even though he doesn't have reviews, he's not on probation, I think is a testament to how the program can work.
Well, thank you for that, and thank you for that story. That's, you know, one of, one of many success stories that we see through this program. Are there ways in which residents and businesses can be involved in this program to help support, either through gift cards, or through, you know, services, employment? You know, what would be some ways that residents or businesses could be involved with this program?
You know, we're always looking for mentors for our juveniles. So it, the problem is it needs to be a commitment, right? If you establish that relationship with the juvenile, the last thing we want is for someone to say, oh, I thought I had time, but now I don't. And so this juvenile, again, is left kind of abandoned with that relationship not being fully established. So we're always looking for mentors that can really make that commitment to the juveniles who are in our program. We're also always looking for, for instance, The Refuge, who we partner with. We had one of our peer support specialists, or I guess it would be health ambassadors, drop off some shoes there the other day, and he came back and said that there was actually, not an argument, but there were a lot of people that were jockeying to get those shoes. So it's clear that they need men's shoes. You can drop them off with our navigator. Our navigator can drop those off to The Refuge. So gift cards, it's a little tricky, because donating money to the courts is kind of a difficult thing to track and to audit, and there might be some ethical concerns there. But the courts do give gift cards to participants, and we have that through our budget, through our court assessments that we assess for each fine that's mostly part of our traffic docket. So that's our budget for a lot of the gift cards and other fees that we pay for, for the participants.
Well, thank you so much for being here.
Yes.
Any other questions, comments? Councilmember Ward?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Sorry I had to plug in my computer, so it missed the first round. Thank you so much for being here. My couple of questions. First is, under the 2026 key initiatives, you mentioned incorporating a probation client module for current case management. Is that something, is that similar to what Mayor Protem Schaaf had asked at the beginning, or is that a different kind of structure and system you're looking to implement?
Yeah, great question. That's actually a computer system that we're trying to implement, so that she can track her cases. The court navigator slash probation officer can track her cases, and then we can get statistical data from that type of system. Right now, she's just doing it based on spreadsheets.
Okay. And what kind, like, with that data, what are you hoping to accomplish with it? What, either performance metrics are you looking for, or there's new things you can implement with that data? Kind of what do you want to do with it?
Well, that's a good question. There's a lot that we can do with it. First of all, we can work with our partnering, or I should say, surrounding communities, because they also are now employing navigators, and we want to track not just data on who we're seeing, but what type of resources are of benefit and being utilized. It's also just for efficiency purposes. Again, right now, she's having to enter everything on a spreadsheet. So she wants to track an individual, or in general, just stats of services that we're providing. It's much more cumbersome. So that would help kind of track her data and also just case management for individuals.
Great. And then right above that, you have Secure Youth Specific Therapists for the Juvenile Community Corrections Court. Is that just something we've budgeted, you've budgeted in this proposed budget? Or are we also looking at either state or federal grant dollars to help fund that?
We're actually, a bit of an update with that, we're working with Clinica, and they have actually employed a therapist for the Broomfield area in general, but also specifically are going to be working with the Community Connection Court to have a therapist there that can work both with juveniles and adults. So I don't think that that will have to come out of our budget at all.
Okay, great. And then my final question, under the 2025 accomplishments, you had, from January to June 2025, there was a $5,300 grant from DCFA, which is Defense Counsel on First Appearance, to help appoint court-appointed counsel for defendants facing jailable offenses. Is that a grant that we're going to continue, that you're going to continue to see for this upcoming year, as well as potentially in the future? And if so, how successful, from your perspective, has the use of that grant been?
That's a great question. And so just in the last about two years, I'd say about 18 months, it was mandated that municipal courts did have to appoint counsel for individuals that were appearing in custody for their first appearance. So that's when the bond is set. Oftentimes, in municipal court, the cases are also resolved. But either way, when they're in custody for their first appearance, they are entitled by statute to have representation. Because that was implemented, and a lot of municipal courts just didn't have the budget for that type of defense counsel, the grant was put in place. Unfortunately, the grant has now been taken away. And so in the upcoming year, that will all fall on the municipal courts. Still mandated that these individuals have counsel, but now the municipal courts or the, the individual municipalities will have to pay for that expense. And it's unfortunate, because it was very, very helpful, and I think very appropriate that if these individuals are appearing in custody, that they have counsel. But now that's something that we're going to have to budget for outside of any grant funds.
Okay. Just two questions on that then. First, how many individuals did we actually have to appoint counsel for? Number one. And then number two, in drafting this 2026 budget, what challenges did you have in incorporating those dollars? I know it's, it was only $5,300, but that's still quite a big sum of money. So I'm just curious how, how you were able to incorporate that.
Well, I appreciate the question. As far as numbers of exactly how many individuals appeared for first appearance and were appointed counsel, I don't have that, but I can get that to you. And so incorporating that into our budget, we just always have to estimate how much we're going to utilize, not just for that first appearance, but in general, those that qualify for counsel even while out of custody. And it fluctuates, right? Because one case can be thousands of dollars if it goes to jury trial. Luckily, last year, we only had two, but those two cases made up most of our budget for defense counsel last year. This year, I don't know. It all depends on whether or not those cases are resolved, or whether or not jury trials will actually go forward. And if so, the complexity of those cases, which would result in higher billing. The good news is we, for the most part, utilize, I would say, there's three main defense counsel that we utilize, and we do use the state rates for defense counsel when they're court-appointed. So we can estimate to the best of our ability, which is why you see those numbers in our budget. But again, that can always change.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Leslie.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Judge, you have done a number of initiatives to be proactive and preventative around particularly youthful crime. Would you share a little bit of some of the success you've been having in that regard? But secondarily, are you looking at anything else, particularly given the issue around racing that we're struggling with, and your partnership with the police department? Is there anything else that you see that could be done there that you might be able to do?
Great question. Thank you. So there are two things that we're focused on specifically when it comes to youth in our community. And we have had an unbelievable partnership with the Broomfield Police Department. Whatever we come up with as far as ideas and programming, they're always willing to give us whatever we need, officers' time, any type of budget requests, as long as they're not out of, out of the ordinary they're willing to participate or partnership with. So there are two programs. One is the Alive at 25 Broomfield specific class that we have. We thought about developing a traffic program here in Broomfield for youth that was outside of any other program that's already been developed. We partnered with the Broomfield Police Department. We realized that the curriculum of Alive at 25 is great. But the difficulty was that that class is often taught online. So a kiddo can log on and kind of, you know, half-pay attention and complete the class, but it's really not very interactive. So collaborating with the Broomfield Police Department, we put together an Alive at 25 Broomfield class. It is in-person. You can only take it if you are a Broomfield resident, or if you get the code from the municipal court or the PD. It is taught by Broomfield officers. The Broomfield officers talk about the struggles of areas in our community that have heightened traffic concerns. So school zones, the street racing, the areas where we've seen some significant or bad accidents. And the youth oftentimes wind up in this class with the officer that's pulled them over, which is great, because it's not that negative impact, right? They have the opportunity to establish the relationship and really learn why the officer did what they did. And ultimately, I think they come away with a much better perspective of not just driving in Broomfield, but the officers and their responsibilities, and why it's so important that they do obey the traffic laws. The other program that we've developed in conjunction with the Workforce Center and the Broomfield Police Department is BTOP. And this program's been up and running for about nine months. It's amazing. And I would love for members of council to go have an opportunity to take a look at one of the classes. It is a free program. It is paid for by the opiate funds that the city and county are collecting. It is taught over two nights, two-hour sessions. It is made up of kids that have appeared in the Broomfield Municipal Court on juvenile violations. And it goes over things like how to fill up, fill out a job application, how to then go turn in that application rather than just, you know, emailing it in or doing it online, asking for the manager, reaching out your hand, shaking their hand, introducing themselves, going through the interview process, how to keep a job. Talks about how drugs impact our community. It talks about mental health for juveniles. They have Soda Pop with a Cop, which is, during one of these sessions, they have about 45 minutes to an hour where they sit down with a police officer who is also there teaching the class, and they can ask the officer any question that they want. Some of these conversations have been heated. Some of these conversations have been difficult. But again, it's that positive type of interaction with the police officer that they don't usually get. They walk away with a resume that's completed for them, that they can turn into any job. They walk away with the card of Marcy Machuga, who's the juvenile workforce center representative. They walk away with our navigator's information. We've had B Corp representatives come and be guest speakers there. So oftentimes, kids will pull them aside and say, you know, I need some more support. How do I get that? It has been wildly successful. Parents have emailed us. Kids have told us after the fact, because they do have to fill out a survey afterwards, that it is not what they expected. We've had kids come back and volunteer because they wanted to do the class again. So again, if you want any information on when it is, please let me know. We'd love it if you'd come check it out.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Judge.
Any other questions, comments for this department? See you none. Thank you so much for being here.
Thanks. Nice seeing everyone.
Good to see you. Next up is Development, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. Please come on down to the podium, introduce yourself, as well as any other staff that you have with you.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, city council members. My name is Vanessa Oldham Barton, and I am the Director of Development, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. And I too am also flying solo tonight, but happy to be here.
We're glad to have you. Any questions or comments for this department? I have one to, oh, nope, Councilmember Win. You got it. You're up.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. For me, obviously, a lot of big firsts, first bit, you know, we had Juneteenth celebration. We had a lot of, you know, of course, the Cloverfield survey, and a lot of accomplishments. And so I guess, looking forward to 2026, what things can we expect from, you know, from diversity, equity, inclusion?
Thank you. I appreciate the question. Yeah, we are, I guess, from the sort of development standpoint, we are going to be bringing some Franklin Covey to our, our leadership platform. And so my team has been sort of train the trainer, again, looking at budgets and making sure that we're able to offer trainings at a more, like, concise price point. And so having my team being able to, to provide those trainings to our leaders was really important for us. It's nice to have, like, sort of, that organization has such a background in training and development, and to be able to bring that to the team to make sure. We really want to focus on getting that structure in place for all of our leaderships, and then, again, expanding that out to all employees. So we're really excited to bring Franklin Covey on board. And we're going to start with the six critical practices for leading a team. We'll be, we'll start next year. Also, I mean, there's, it feels like there's so much going on. Our development, or our diversity work group continues to meet. And so goals for next year for that group will be to continue to do a little bit more of the community outreach. Again, kind of reaching out to our particular different organizations and different community members to make sure that we are providing the services that they are looking for, and the way that they are looking for them. So there's a plan to do some community meetings and that type of thing that is coming from one of our pillars of the diversity work group. We are also looking at, sorry, I have my notes here. Language access, too, is going to be a big push for next year. We have found that our access to language, various languages, has increased, or the demand for them have increased over the last year. And so making sure that our employees are very aware of what programs and devices are available to them, to make sure that they are providing services to our community and the language of their choice. So those are a few of the highlights that we're looking for.
Do you have any languages that are, are just showing up more recently, or?
Surprisingly, so I was, I did pull the information of this, this year of what the most requested languages were. And I was kind of surprised by what I saw. So Spanish is definitely our, our number one language, but Mandarin is our next, followed by Nepali, Vietnamese, and Russian. So those are our top five. So those are our top five languages right now. And again, I think the more people realize that they can ask for that service, the more that we'll see, I'm thinking, a broader use of the products that we have.
Absolutely. And again, I really appreciate the work you've done. And so very impressed with the amount of events we've been, I was at the Juneteenth event. So I'm excited to see the next years and continue to see the work of, you know, diversity, equity, inclusion, so.
Yeah, we're hopeful. I think actually, our library staff is going to include the Juneteenth event as the opener for the summer concerts. So again, that'll be just a part of who we are and what we do in the city and county of Broomfield.
Thank you. Those are my questions, Mayor Protam.
Thank you. Councilmember Ward.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. It's good to see you again. Just a couple of questions. One, you mentioned the Franklin Covey kind of program. Can you just, for those of us either on council and also in the community that don't know what that is, explain briefly what that is?
Sure. So Franklin Covey has been around for decades. I mean, they really are pretty well-known in sort of leadership development. So they've done all the research, right? They've done all the, kind of fine-tuned the practice of leading training. And so it really is like, it's a big honor. And I will say that it was with our HR team as well that we sort of started researching, like, what Covey looked like if we brought that here. And truly, they have all the data and the research. And so we just get to learn how to provide that service. The beautiful part about it, too, is they kind of have like these pre and post things for after the training. So it keeps people engaged. And so again, I think they've just done the, they've done all the background work. So you've probably heard of like the four Ds or some of those things that have kind of been around for a really long time. I will say that I think that they have sort of improved their inclusive sort of nature to the programs that they're offering. So we thought that it would be a good fit for the city and county of Broomfield.
Great. Thank you. And then my last question is, under the 2026 key initiatives, you mentioned the launch of the implementation of a career development plan focused on supporting growth for non-leadership positions, which I think is great. Kind of two sub-questions in that. One, did this come about because we noticed there was either dissatisfaction with non-leadership positions and they weren't feeling supported? Or kind of how did that come about? And then two, what will that plan look like? Is it going to be really tailored specific for that individual? More broad? What does that process look like in that planning?
Sure. Thank you for the question. You know, I think that the last couple of years, we really have been focused on leadership. I think that that has been a gap that we recognize that we really weren't giving our leaders the support that they needed and deserved. And so now we're like, we really do need to focus on our employees as a whole. And not that we haven't done that throughout the years. Like, I mean, we definitely have classes that are available to anybody, you know, disability etiquette or even like the basics of, you know, how to do your timesheet and that type of thing. But we want to make sure that we're offering development. And through our platform, through Cornerstone, there are a lot of trainings that anybody can have access to and to utilize. But our goal is to really start thinking about, you know, from the ground up, when we're talking about succession planning and that type of thing, to make sure that we are giving those tools to all of our employees because we want them to be here and we want them to continue to develop in their current roles or to think about, like, if I decided to take the next step, what does that look like? And what pieces do I have to put into place to make sure that that happens? And so that's what we'll be developing over the next year.
Okay. And so I guess just kind of a quick follow-up on that. This, for lack of a better term, is kind of optional. It's something that employees would kind of seek out and sign up for instead of, this is going to be something that every single employee goes through, correct?
Right. We do our mandatory training. And so this will definitely be something that people seek out on their own.
Okay, great. I know, speaking as a non-leadership employee at my job, we don't like mandatory training.
There's enough of that. So we definitely want people to opt in. And I think too, like, we've noticed too, a lot of our, like, we do some internal, like, sort of cultural components as well. Like, we have a book group that we do and we have, we'll have like a Hispanic heritage celebration. And so some of those trainings too, or they're not really trainings, but they're sort of more opportunities for staff to come together, I think, have really encouraged people to then do the next thing too. Like, oh, you know, it's not so bad to do these things at work and it's a safe environment. And so we've noticed an uptick in a lot of our trainings because I think people are feeling more confident and comfortable.
Great. Thank you so much and keep up the good work.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Leslie.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I just want to compliment you for this initiative. I just literally did a workshop with Franklin Covey yesterday for the state of Arizona. The Seven Habits of Highly Effective People is the most popular leadership program in the entire world. The theme we had yesterday was a leader in every seat. The point being that it's not just for directors, supervisors, et cetera. Leadership has got to be for everybody. So I just want to compliment the approach that you're taking by bringing everybody ultimately into the program and giving everybody leadership training is going to really bring synergy to the organization well beyond what it is today. So congratulations on what you're doing.
Thank you. And you did a much better job describing it than I did. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor Tim. A quick question I wanted to ask you, or maybe the manager might need to answer. Are you tracking retention in terms of are we retaining employees at a certain rate? And employees across the board, we're not having any issues, particular groups?
That probably is probably more of a question for...
We absolutely do. And it's a multi-pronged approach. It's not just retention. So oftentimes, I think leadership teams get caught in the exit interview syndrome versus the why do you stay? So we have stay interviews versus really having a correlative effect to what does this? We had a question recently that was, how many FTEs do you have on your DDEI team? And our response is 1,500. So we know that in the last four years, Councilmember Cohen, the correlative, not only from retention, but for attraction, a lot of our comments are the reason they're coming here is because of our culture. The reason they're coming here is because of what we stand for. And so this work is not individual work. It's not an individual team work. It's deeply embedded in who we are and how we show up. And it's one of the reflections in the recent employee survey that we've done. It's four out of five stars that we are getting. And so it's a correlative. We know that people don't stay. Number five is for salary. Number one through four is your boss, your culture, your flexibility, and the opportunity to grow. So these plans that we put through with training incorporate all of these departments that are here. And so again, the opportunities to grow and nurture our folks regardless of their level is something that adds to our high level of retention. And it also adds to being fully staffed.
Yeah, I just wanted, you know, it's important part of, retention is also a cost savings. That you invest in people and they leave, you lose all that investment and we have to start over. So I heard generally that we have a high retention rate and just wanted to ask in that nature. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
We have one of the lowest turnover rates in the surrounding communities. So whether it's the, and we estimate based on FTE, it's about $32,000 when you have turnover.
And I will just add to, like, as Jennifer said, it is like, the training that we do really is all of the departments come together to really try to bring the best information forward. And so, for instance, we have like anti-discrimination law in the workplace. And our attorneys teach that to our staff. And so I think that, again, that helps with the culture piece, I think, to be able to see that our attorneys care enough, right? To take a two-hour time, you know, out of their day multiple times during the year to make sure that this information is shared with our staff. And so I don't, I think it's, the culture really does play a huge piece into, I think, the retention and why people stay.
I know you probably aren't, I don't know if you're able to do that. Are you able to track whether microaggressions have reduced in the time that we've had a DDEI, which I don't know, is five years?
Yeah, it's been five years. Go ahead. Sorry, Jen.
No, go ahead, V.
Well, I was going to say, we haven't done the survey again. I think we did a survey in the initial, when we became a department. We haven't completed that survey a second time. But, and I will say, I feel like it feels different. Like, I will just say, like, I think our environment feels different. I think people do feel a connection to the place and are feel more able, I think, to be their true selves. And I think that if there are conflicts, I think they've been given the tools to sort of address that as well.
Do you think you'll do the survey again this year?
It's something that we should do. Like, I think we should start thinking about when that's going to come back around or if we use it as part of the beep, maybe in the next, and we do beep, have components of that original survey be a part of it.
Qualitative is always good to go along with quantitative.
No, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, City and County Manager Hoffman and as well as Ms. Oldham, thank you for articulating the importance of this department, but also the importance of this work that you all do. I mean, it really sounds like that, you know, the integral part of what this has become, it's not just a standalone department, but it's really kind of the bedrock of the organization for, you know, all the voices within the city and county of Broomfield. So thank you for your work on this and thank you for making sure that it is so crucial to our organization that people feel like they have a home here. So thank you. Any other questions, comments for this department? See you none. Thank you so much for being here. Next, we have Economic Vitality. And I just saw this whole group, you know, at the groundbreaking for the hi-fi of Flatiron Crossing. What a spectacular event. What a spectacular development coming to Broomfield.
Well, thank you. You added quite a bit of sunshine and delight into that same event.
Little bit more red up here.
Thank you for having me, Mayor Protam, members of city council, city staff. My name is Robert Smith. Believe it or not, it's my actual honest-to-goodness real name. I have the pleasure of representing the Economic Vitality Department tonight. We are a small but mighty group of eight full-time individuals, including myself. I don't think we're the smallest and most mighty of the departments. I think Mr. Bernie Block gets the gold medal in that regard. But I think we're a silver or bronze medalist in that category. So very happy to be here. Economic Vitality is the department. There are two divisions within the department. The first division is economic development, which is a traditional or legacy business and commercial traction and retention sort of effort. And then housing is on the other hand. So happy to represent that department and those hardworking individuals. And thank you so much for inviting me to this morning. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you so much for being here. We'll start off with Councilmember Cohen.
Are you aware we had a James Taylor here last, or the night before?
I did not know. The James Taylor or?
He said he was the James Taylor.
And a James Taylor.
He had more hair than the James Taylor in Broomfield. And I also appreciate that you dress the part for the Department of Economic Vitality.
Oh, well, thank you. That's very kind.
Maybe that's a challenge to everybody else. Your department's been having, I think, considerable success in this past year with a lot of new businesses that are coming in to Broomfield, notably in the aerospace sector. Do you think that's something we'll see more of or we think we'll have opportunities, particularly since Interlochen is in this transition with office building space? And I'm not sure what the next phase is, but we need another phase for Interlochen. But if you could speak to that.
Absolutely, yes. I think we will have continued success with that. One of the programs that we were able to put in place this year is through the state's Office of Economic Development and International Trade is a chip zone project. So that really is the state's desire to invest more money into quantum computing. And we have a couple of very important quantum computing companies here in Broomfield, as well as the aerospace industry that you've mentioned in there, advanced manufacturing, good jobs, solid companies. For the most part, Broomfield has a really great opportunity to work with those small, growing and becoming unicorn-type companies in our environment. And we're very excited to be able to attract those in there. But yeah, we've had some great success and we will continue to have great success.
What are your thoughts on Interlochen and that part of the city?
Well, as council knows, we did a great study under the direction of Mr. Jeff Romine, got a study together from the AECOM folks on the Interlochen, actually, the whole 36 corridor in there. So Interlochen, the Urban Transit Village or Arista Development and Flatiron Crossing. And it identified some things that were, I want to say challenges or obstacles that are in the way of us doing all of the success that we possibly can do. So we're going to do everything we can to mitigate those obstacles, meet those challenges and make certain that the asset, that Interlochen that you specifically mentioned and those other developments along the 36 corridor are able to produce at the highest level that they possibly can. And so we anticipate some really great things happening there in the next few years.
And on the opposite side of town in Ward 5, we had hoped to be having Swedish meatballs there at some point. Apparently not. Is there any thoughts where, what kind of economic development we might be able to, as I've mentioned in the manager, Bucky's already built a few miles away, so that one's off the list. But is there any hope of some sort of sales tax motherload that could replace what was going to be?
Absolutely. I'll point out that you can have Swedish meatballs anytime you want. Just go ahead and have them. But that particular project that I think you're trying to reference in there is a fantastic corner. That property is an amazing property and the commercial aspects of both I-25 and Highway 7, you know, it just screams for commercial things. So we've had some good success in terms of reaching out and trying to work with the owners of the property currently, the folks that you referenced, as well as opportunities to come in there. And I think we're going to see something great happen over there. Now, I will say that it's probably set up in such a way that the space and the land that's over there may be set up for a multi-use sort of a project, but for our mixed-use sort of a project over there. But I think we will see sales tax producing, as you mentioned, or commercial properties happening in that particular area. Yep.
And finally, are there any tools that we lack, that we need, that you have on a wish list that would help bring in more companies that offer livable wage jobs that people could afford to work and live here?
That's a great question and thanks for asking that. For the most part, the answer that I would respond to is that the tools that we have are fairly solid for what we are trying to achieve. There's always an opportunity for more tools, but we ask for what we need to be successful with our programs. We deploy those resources effectively. And I think we've gotten great results with those, the things that we've done in the past and what we're proposing to do in 2026.
All right. Thank you.
You bet.
Councilmember Winn.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Mr. Smith, I really appreciate your energy as always and of course, the work of your team because we've done a lot in 2025. And so for 2026, if you can just go briefly over, because on the financial summary sheet, some of the numbers kind of explode for 2025, revised budget, but then goes back to, you know, 1 million, 1.5 million, 1 point, there's like a revised for 52%, 78% for the housing fund. Can you just go over why this is happening with the Vitality's budget?
It's a great question and thanks for asking. I don't know that I have all of the specifics of the numbers that you're talking about there. In general, housing incorporates different revenue streams for different things. As you know, we manage the Housing Development Fund or the HDF, as well as a variety of grants that come from the feds and that sort of thing. So dollars that come in through those processes increase the revenue side of the budget, but we also immediately warn, deploy those right out there. So sometimes those are things that we can anticipate a year in advance. Sometimes there are opportunities that come up quickly. So we're always trying to remain nimble and respond to the opportunities in the environment. And sometimes those create swings. When you start with a relatively small budget, a swing of 50% sounds like a lot, but in terms of total dollars, it can be, you know, I'm not saying insignificant, but not as significant as maybe some other swings of 52% might be in other budgets.
No, you explained pretty well. I think that the money has to go through the office. And what you're doing is basically you're allocating those dollars amounts for housing units, housing funds, et cetera. So I appreciate that. My next question is going to be, you know, like we mentioned, Raven Space Systems, a lot of companies coming into Broomfield. And our neighboring cities and communities are not seeing that much economic callus. Would this, in theory, continue, this training continue with a domino effect where more companies will come in and hopefully make their homes and headquarters in Broomfield?
Absolutely. Well, I'd like to credit our team for all of that. You know, the fact that we're successful in other communities may not be, has to do with our team, obviously. That's a, that's a great consideration in there. And yes, that success will continue. And we're positioning ourselves to continue that same success. We work on those kinds of things every day. Each and every day, we're trying to work on bringing in good-paying jobs, primary jobs, as well as those tax generating sorts of projects as well. So yes, we will continue to see success.
That's why I want to hear. Appreciate it. Those are my questions, Mayor Protam. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lynn.
I had a resident who would like some confirmation about the housing department of your, of the Economic Vitality. The, the resident wanted to know for sure that the partial property tax refund program and the utility rate assistance program, which are both administered under the, under housing are budgeted in 2026.
They are budgeted. And yes, we will be continuing to administrate and, and implement those projects through 2026. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you for those questions. Councilmember Ward.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. My question relates back to the study we did with AECOM for the 36 corridor itself. Now that we have that data, what, how is your team implementing that data to make either recommendations within the department, across departments and or to city council about policy changes that may need to happen? And using your tools to kind of address the issues that were identified in that report?
Great question and thanks for asking. And it brings me to a, a great moment here to be able to tell you that at the tail end of the month, we'll be having a collaborative or what we refer to as a roundtable sort of thing with property owners in that, in that are identified in that area. Brokers and folks that work on the real estate in there, businesses that are in that environment. So basically the folks that are in that environment, we will have a, a sit down for a couple of hours over a lunch and we'll talk about all of the things that are in the AECOM study. We'll talk about all of the resources that the city and county of Broomfield want to bring and are bringing to that, to that process. And then be able to have them identify the challenges and what they are individually doing about the challenges so that hopefully collaboratively, we can have an even bigger swing at making success happen out there. So I like to believe that all of the answers are with us somehow. We just have to open those lines of communication and be successful in terms of saying what specific sorts of programs are we going to do in order to reduce the vacancy out there? To increase the amenitization of those areas, those sorts of things. We'll figure those out together. That's the, that's the process.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. Councilmember Leslie.
The one center.
The one center.
Yeah. So the one center that seems to come to us all the time is the elimination of the center out in Arista that, you know, we weren't able to really market very well. And now it's gone. But what is the strategy to get that replaced?
The strategy is that recognizing what that was and was not is an important part of the process. Essentially, it's saying that, that wasn't a functionable sort of an arrangement over there. So setting the table so that we can have success over there is tremendous. As you know, we put out a request for proposals in there and that had somewhat of a limited effect. But we are in the market talking with folks about what can be done there. And really, we need to reposition that. It's a great piece of property. It's a fantastic piece of property right along the 36 corridor, a lot of traffic in there. But it needs to be developed in a way that includes a lot of the things that we need in that particular area, everything from mixed use, residential, commercial, those sorts of things. And so I feel very good about it because we've established a canvas on which the market can now paint a, a, a future. I'm torturing this metaphor already. Yes, but you get the general idea in there that we've set, we've set ourselves up for success.
Okay. So can you predict when we might get an offer or proposal that would be worthwhile pursuing?
Oh, I would hesitate to do that prediction in there. As you know, the microeconomic environment right now is somewhat challenging. If I had a crystal ball, I probably couldn't, you know, make a lot of money off of that there. And so it's really determining, you know, where the capital markets are and where the demand is. We know that there's good demand and we know that it's a great piece of property to work with. And so I would hope that it's sooner than later, but that's about as strong an estimate as I can give you right at this moment.
Yeah. Just to city manager, we were losing money every year on that. Now that it's gone, are we still losing money?
Well, that's, that's a, a little bit more of a complicated than yes and no.
Why turn to you for that?
You know, for the smarts in the room are.
Two, two things. One, by the time it's all said and done, that is a $135 million price tag. We will not be finished paying off those bonds until 2030. Arista Development was able to finally, two and a half years ago, generate enough sales tax to pay for those bond payments for the First Bank Center. So two things. One, we need to ensure that for our future generation, whatever goes there is not a fly by night. That it is something that is consistent with the energy and environment that Arista has become, that it is energized. And that really parlay's on those two different properties, kind of parcel A and parcel B. So it's worth the wait. By tearing down that property, it saves our PD. It saves our emergency management. And from a, an investment perspective, we're saving anywhere between a million and a million point five dollars. Five dollars. 1.5 million dollars a year by not having that structure. So that is the cost savings, but it would be a misnomer to say it's a cost savings simply because we still have that outstanding bond amount.
Yeah, sure. You've been very transparent about that whole thing all the way through. But I just really, for all of us, just, you know, where are we? Where are we going with this thing? And the benefits that frankly, we are reaping by having it torn down. But clearly, you have a strong sense of the marketing side of things and it's what it's going to take to get that property rebuilt.
But that, and I'm a relentless optimist. I, you know, we, we are in a good position with that.
Super. Thank you.
You bet.
You had mentioned the not knowing the prediction on kind of when that was going to happen. We had already put out a request for proposals. That was a milestone. So what, what are the next milestones for that property in terms of getting, getting that property developed?
Ooh, that's a great question in there. I would say that there is a lot more art than, than science to trying to market properties of that, that nature. We're in communication with lots of folks that would have an interest in developing that, that property and would have the, the firepower to develop that property successfully into what the community would like it to be. But it really has to, all of the, the factors need to come together in that same thing. The capital markets, the, the demand, the understanding, the difference in the project and that microeconomic environment in there. And so that's why it's difficult to understand the time. But it's not something that leaves our minds for more than a few hours at a time. We keep working on it. Keep, keep trying to generate leads, keep trying to generate activity in order to be successful in that, in that area.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mayor Protem, if I may add, one of the conversations that it's, it's incumbent upon all of us to have is that activation of the corridor. So between Flatirons, Interlochen and Arista, we haven't thought in those terms before. Just at the groundbreaking this morning with the, at Flatirons, having those conversations about attracting various businesses and multi-use to Interlochen, obviously, the, the, the big ticket item right now is the Lumen property. What does that mean to repurpose? What does that mean to market? In a historically office environment? It allows us an opportunity to have additional conversations with what's happening at Flatirons, what's happening at Interlochen and that Lumen campus, and how do we connect that with Arista in the First Bank Center? So it's a much more cohesive discussion that we're able to have now in the last 24 months than we've ever been able to have before. And how do we capitalize on that?
So you're saying that, that some of those possibilities of, of the redevelopment of Flatiron Crossing Mall, the kind of continued, kind of re, not quite redevelopment of Interlochen, but as those pieces start to come together, that's going to start to lift that whole corridor?
Without, without a doubt. And, and you, you, you wouldn't have an effective nor comprehensive leadership team if we were not re-envisioning what that looked like instead of three different entities.
Okay. And so just to, just to get back to you for, for the milestone. So at this point, we're not putting out another request for a proposal. We are kind of gathering some of those leads. We're kind of moving towards those conversations. So it's much more subtle as opposed to kind of a big, kind of public event.
Right. It's, it's not as, as much in the, in the public eye as it is. Any, anytime local governments have properties that they're, they're working on and whatnot, you have to have an opportunity for everybody to, to come in and say, I'd like to do X, Y, and Z with that property and that sort of thing. So we do those big milestones so that we make certain that we, that the entire community, and that's larger community in the United States, understands that we have an asset that's, that's available and it's something that we want to redevelop. Once you've done that and you get to a point where you can actually go out and start working with folks, there may be a time in the future where another RFP might be in place in there, or we may wind up distilling out a developer that will work with us and that we can work on that arrangement with it, with that property.
Excellent. Well, I know that with the mall, there's a lot of excitement about the changes that are, that are happening there. I, you know, on the, the other side of the coin, you know, the longer that, that Safeway has sat empty, you know, the excitement for that project goes down. And I, I would say that, you know, right now, getting that event center, you know, activated and that, and that site built, I think, is going to continue that excitement around that corridor. So I hope, hope that happens soon. And I hope that, you know, the energy and the excitement for Broomfield continues to go and that we attract somebody that's really great for that, that space. So thank you for your work on this.
Absolutely. One of my favorite authors, Ralph Waldo Emerson, said, nothing great is ever achieved without enthusiasm. And I try to live that each and every day.
Excellent. Councilmember Ward.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I appreciate my colleagues, Councilmember Leslie and Mayor Protem Schaaf for mentioning the First Bank Center and Aristodists in general. In going through this process of trying to resell the first, the former First Bank Center properties into whatever they become, keeping in mind that that area is supposed to be transit oriented and not necessarily a traditional type of development we would see for a suburb. What conversations are we having or have even, have we even had with that just Arista community, knowing that they're going to be the ones that face kind of most of the redevelopment terms of construction, disturbances in habits, et cetera? What kind of conversations have we been having with them about what they would like to see and what's missing from that neighborhood in particular? So that way we are bringing that neighborhood along instead of, I guess, quote unquote, imposing something on them?
Gotcha. We have, thank you for that question. It's a great question. The, the short answer is, is that we're always looking for partners, strategic partners to help us get to where we need. We, we don't always have the resources that we can take something to where we want it to be. And so we need strategic partners to be able to do that. And part of that is the communities in which those properties lie, as you've pointed out there. So we've talked with the Arista folks over there. We've talked with the Waynes folks. We've talked with those, those folks and say, hey, how do we make this work? How do we position this? In the larger context, as City Manager Hoffman mentioned, the, the three properties in there, looking at them holistically, that's part of that roundtable discussion that we need to have with those folks and say, what are we doing? What can we do? What needs to happen to make this as successful as possible? All the way up and down that corridor. So those conversations are taking place on, on the regular.
Yes. And I appreciate that we are thinking of the US six, US 36 corridor as one corridor. Now that it's becoming really a full neighborhood instead of just kind of an office park with a mall and this small development that is Arista that kind of hasn't materialized the way we had hoped. My question though, was not necessarily about the development community. I, you know, there's the Weens and whatever they want to say, but the actual people that lived there, what kind of conversations are we having with them about what they're missing? And soliciting their input?
We, certainly we will have those conversations as, as we go forward. The development process has a lot of those kinds of milestones in there in terms of what the community wants to support. And that community can be different types of community. At this point, we're really working towards the, how do we work on the redevelopment of the site successfully? And that really entails a lot of the businesses that are out there and the, and the development community in terms of bringing investment into that area. As far as working with the residents and whatnot, we've never excluded anyone, but we haven't done a real strong reach out and say, hey, what do you, what you folks that are living in the nearby area, what do you think will work over here? We haven't done that, but that's a great idea that we certainly could play.
Mr. Smith, if, if I may, Councilmember Ward, as soon as the time comes where we're discussing with the residents about what may happen, that, that's going to be a really good conversation. We are two years out from that conversation to really understand what it is that they want. We don't have that luxury yet. What we know they don't want is more housing. So they have been clear from the rental properties that are out there, from the business community, as Mr. Smith had indicated, those are two very, very different wants. Collectively, what we've heard is they want something that is going to be energized, that is not going to be loud, that is not going to be all residential, that is going to be foot traffic under certain circumstances, and they really want a grocery store. So those are the key components without even soliciting that we continue to hear in a, in a variety of arenas, not just as residents, what, what would you like to see here? And I think part of it is, is that cadence, asking them what they want to see and not being able to deliver anything right now. We want to be able to manage those expectations. And we also don't want to be in the position to say no because we don't know what that is yet. So, so just to reiterate and summarize, how about a grocery store? Not big lights, not big noise, a quick turnaround time on construction. We don't want to be disrupted too much and make it really cool. Oh, okay. Yep. Okay. F all of the above. So we're, we're continuing, we're continuing to do the best we can under those circumstances. And again, the, the primary thing that we know that we continue to talk about is it has to be a revenue generator. Those two parcels have to generate revenue for us. I know there's a lot of conversation initially that market, market driven right now is residential, residential, residential. And we all know that residential costs us more than commercial. So those areas there really have to have that primary effectiveness of, of, of generating funds for us.
Yes. Thank you.
Uh, thank you for that, those questions, comments. The last thing, you know, I just want to say that, you know, much of our conversation and, and our interactions earlier were about new development, just new businesses. And I think that we can all get jazzed for that. But I also want to know, note that we pride ourselves with our current and our long-term small businesses here on Broomfield that continue to be the heart and soul of our community. And I hope in 2026 that we can continue to nurture and support those small businesses, you know, along with our, our, our partners with the Broomfield Chamber. But I hope that that's something that we continue to do in 2026 is really support and nurtures those small businesses that are in our Broomfield community.
Absolutely. That's one of the credos that we live by is, is that business expansion and retention are the, are the, are the bedrock of that. And so we have, a lot of our energy is, is devoted towards existing businesses. If you think about that, if every existing business did one more job, that would be a landslide of jobs coming into the area. So if we can use that plus one mentality, one more sale, one more square foot occupied, one more campaign, one more job, all of those things will add to our local economy in ways that, that attraction of new stuff is. New stuff is shiny and exciting and, and it's a great time to celebrate that. But really, if we can grow within, that's the, that's the way to the future.
Love it. All right. Any other questions, comments for this department? See you none. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Uh, next up is finance. Come on down. Please introduce yourself and your team.
Hello, Graham Clark, Director of Finance. With me tonight is a very small team. They are extremely mighty. They've put forth as much effort on this budget as there has been for probably five to 10 years, if not longer. Very intentional this year, working with the departments, every one of them, multiple meetings. We were talking about all those manual spreadsheets before and all the ERP changes that will come. We're still in the manual spreadsheet world and they've been working very diligently over the last, you know, probably six months in order to deliver this budget. And I'm very proud of it.
Excellent. Council, any questions, comments for this department? I'll jumpstart us for our conversation. So you had mentioned the ERP process. That's going to be a big thing that starts kicking off soon. You know, that's, it's going to be grueling. It's going to be a big lift for your department. But the rest of the organization, many parts of the rest of the organization. So, you know, one, one of my questions is how, how do you take care of your staff during this implementation? What are those ways? And do we have those things budgeted to really take care of our staff during this implementation process?
Yeah, that's a really good question. We, we know that it's going to be a long timeframe. You know, it really is a, a two-year timeframe and we have talked about building in mental health days and that type
And we have talked about building in mental health days and that type of thing, just making sure everybody's rejuvenated, everybody's taking their vacation. We've got several team building events with the whole ERP group and finance in particular as well. We'll do that on a quarterly basis, so we hope to break it up at times. Those are what we've got scheduled so far, but the reality is that it will be difficult on staff and we're trying to prepare them mentally for that as best we can. We're also, you know, our approach to this implementation is not to customize the ERP. That's one of the biggest downfalls that you can have, and that's partially what we've seen with our HR system. But we plan on taking an out-of-the-box process, taking the software out of the box. And obviously, it's not a plug-and-play like we talked about on Tuesday, but we do intend on making it as easy as possible on staff in that regards.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Lynn?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Mr. Clark, in the budget proposal, talked about the requirement for a 10% operational reserve city policy. And in 2025, we achieved, or the city and county achieved, 20%. When was the last time we hit 20%? And how do we maintain that current reserve in our community?
We plan on maintaining that 20%. That was our goal. It was a five-year process to get there, and we got there. We're at the 20% now. We don't anticipate going above that. Best practice is generally through GFOA, about 17.5% is best practice for reserves in the general fund. We're at 20. We feel like that's a very sufficient number to have. We don't intend to use that also unless it's some type of an emergency that we would need to, something like the Marshall Fire or something like that. But no, we've gotten to the 20% and we feel like that's a great place to be right now.
Excellent. I think we have a balanced budget. I appreciate the work your team does. You are correct. It's a small but mighty team and a lot you've done. So thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments for this department? Well, thank you for all your work. Thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Next up is information technology. Another department that has a big lift coming up in 2026 with the ERP implementation. So thank you for your efforts so far.
Good evening. I'm Kateri Abada, the IT Director for Broomfield. And with me today is Robert Belton. He's our Deputy Director of IT. Ken Kim, our PMO Manager. Jake Donnelly, our Customer Success Team Manager. Robin Smallsbauer, he's the Head of our Cybersecurity Team. And Cheryl Navara, our Business Operations Manager. The one person from my leadership team not in attendance tonight is Adrian Crop. He's our GIS Manager. We're happy to be here.
Excellent. Well, thank you for being here and thank you to your team for being here as well. Counsel, any questions, comments for this department? Councilmember Cohen, you're up first.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just had a quick question about our dark fiber lease strategy. Dark fiber is fiber not being used, right?
That's correct.
So what are we doing?
Good question. It's nice and broad. So I think we've talked in the past around how we're building out our fiber network. We're overbuilding it, meaning that we're building in capacity to monetize the investment. So one conduit we're dedicating for Broomfield's use to light up our network for things like traffic signals, all of our buildings, our lift and pump stations, things like that, all Broomfield assets. And then we have a second conduit that we purposely left empty in order to lease, populate that empty duct with dark fiber and lease that dark fiber to internet service providers that are interested. So to date, I think we have six master lease license agreements that have come before counsel for internet service providers. And we currently are in discussions with three of them, Intrepid, Hyperfiber, and Google Fiber, to discuss potential leasing of some of that dark fiber.
Looking forward, what kind of changes do you think residents will see this year or the year after in terms of fiber options?
So currently, Intrepid and Hyperfiber are actively in construction in various parts of the city and county of Broomfield. There's a website on the broomfield.org website. It's called, the page is called Fiber to the Home. So staff can, or residents can go to that website and see where the active build is going on for Fiber to the Home and which companies are building at this point. For Broomfield and our lease opportunities, the opportunities are on major corridors like down Sheridan, 144th, 120th, 136th, Lowell, just to name a few. But if any of those internet service providers need to bring their feeder lines up those major corridors, that's where they can lease from us and then they'll build out into the neighborhood.
Do you, well, do you think it'll be available this year or are we still?
I don't think that, I don't have a good answer for you on that one. But knowing some of the high-level details of where these companies are in their build process right now, I don't think they'll be offering services this year.
Okay. And we think there'll be a max of three that we'll be leasing to?
Those are the current active conversations that we're having now. We, council just approved a master license agreement with Lightgig. And their business model is such that any new development that comes into Broomfield, they partner with those developers to install fiber to those homes or those developments right from the greenfield. So we've had a preliminary conversation with Lightgig and we'll just continue with these companies as they provide their site plan.
And in term of monetization, how lucrative is this for the city?
Well, we're hoping to get a return on the investment of installing that second duct. And we've established with the finance team a lease rate. And it's per strand mile. So if we have a company that wants to lease 12 strands, it could look a lot different from a company who's interested in 288 strands of fiber. So it just depends on what their needs are. But our goal is to get a return on our investment and hopefully bring their services to market quicker.
It won't fund your department, but it'll be?
No, sir. That's a good question. This is a program, the fiber program. So we will definitely need ongoing funds to repair and maintain it. There will be adds, moves, and changes to the network as we continue to grow. And we currently have an outside plant program manager that is critical to our build-out and the maintenance and support of the network going forward. So there is some definite?
Primarily facilitating and maintaining.
Absolutely. Yes.
Last question real quick. Can you discuss the AI enablement services? What you're seeing for this year?
Enablement services for fiber?
No, just on your initiatives with AI enablement?
Oh, AI.
Sorry.
Yes. Yes. I would like to have the Deputy Director of IT, Robert Belton, talk about that. He is leading the effort for Broomfield on this.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, Counsel. Yeah, we've started an AI program and we have three core groups that we've developed. The first is AI Steering Committee, and that committee is formed by the city managers and directors and deputy directors to help us make some strategic decisions around AI. We had a volunteer group called AI Champions, and we had about 70 get involved, so pretty significant. We created a training program for them to increase AI literacy. And then we've started an AICOP or Community of Practice that meets weekly so that we can discuss AI, increase AI literacy. So that mechanism has just started and it's going well so far.
I imagine if you're probably like where I work, we're getting lots of vendors coming in the door saying they have the AI solution for you. I imagine we don't know what the AI solution is yet, but are you targeting any specific operations that we might see the best place to implement?
Yeah, not yet. What we're really focusing on right now, at least in the initial phases of the program, is increasing that AI literacy, trying to attack the concept of failure of imagination. The thought is that if we can get the departments and a lot of the individuals that are experts in their particular departments to build their base understanding of AI literacy, that connection will help us identify those kinds of opportunities. So that's the first phase that we're really focusing on.
So when you come back next year, we'll have a whole different conversation.
Yeah.
Okay.
The second thing that we're doing too is we established an AI tool review process. So we're very aware that there's a lot of vendors that will be pushing the AI technology to us, and we want to partner with departments so that we can kind of review that technology together and come up with a good, sound reasoning for implementing those things when we do.
Okay. Terrific. Thank you.
Councilmember Cohen, might I add, there won't be one department that is not touched, impacted, or influenced by AI to varying degrees within the next six months. But certainly by the time we come next year, we'll have a multitude of case studies.
Ready. Thank you for that. Councilmember Lim?
Yes, on the subject of the internet providers that have now have licenses, there seemed at first to be some obstacles with the way they informed residents of their operations in the neighborhood and some misunderstanding, miscommunication. I don't know what it was. But have we made efforts on our part then to fully communicate in a fuller way? I have, you know, I have not seen the amount of emails that we got at first as far as, you know, from residents, what in the world are they doing in my neighborhood? I don't understand what I'm supposed to do.
That's a good question, Councilmember Lim. I would have to defer to our community development team to give you an answer on that. But I will say that the website, the Fiber to the Home page on our broomfield.org website is in response to trying to provide residents with a little bit more information about where active buildings, building is going on to provide fiber in specific neighborhoods. But in terms of how these companies are beefing up their communication practice, I'd have to defer to my colleagues in community development, but we can get back to you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lim. Any other questions or comments for this department? Seeing none. Thank you so much for being here. It's great to see you all. Counsel, we have two departments left, Parks, Recreation, Senior Services, and Police. It's 8:04. Should we take a break or power through? Take a break. All right. We will be back at 8:15. All right. Welcome back. Thank you so much for the break. And we left off with our introduction to Parks, Recreation and Senior Services. So please come down, introduce yourself and your staff that are here with you.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, Council, Clay Shuck, Director of Operations. So I have emergency management and on the other side at Parks Recreation Senior Services. I apparently need to update, up my game because between IT, finance and PD, I did not bring enough staff with me this evening. So, but I am, I'm very humbled to introduce the staff that I do have. They're folks that I get to work with every day and they do such an amazing job. Matt Golly, who's the Recreation Superintendent. Ryan Jensen, who's the Park Superintendent. Nikki Kraus, who is our Senior Service Manager. And the one that's missing tonight is Angela Chaver, who is our Administrative Office Manager.
Excellent. Well, thank you all for being here. Council, any questions, comments for this department? Councilmember Lim.
This is Senior Services. There's a note on the 2026 key initiatives that you will conduct a review of existing senior programs and services and make a strategic plan for each area. We've talked in different contexts about the demographics of rooms, Colorado and Broomfield in particular, of the increase in our senior population. Is this review of the existing programs in response to the increasing demographics? I'd like to ask, how are you going to address this with possibly needing to not increase resources? And I'm just curious what you're thinking there.
Thanks, Councilmember Lim. I am going to ask Nikki Kraus, our Senior Service Manager, to answer that question.
Thank you for the question. And certainly we do see lots of change in the population. Of course, in the number of older adults that we have here in Broomfield and the variety of needs. We're working with DDEI on translating some of our materials to be able to meet the needs. And that truly is, is behind the initiative to assess what's working well. That's something we always do, but this project is a little bit more formal in the ability to be able to, as, as our population is growing, our staff size is not growing. So kind of how can we be strategic and spread ourselves? Be able to put our best foot forward utilizing the resources that we have and do the things that make the most sense. Thanks.
Can I just add to that, Councilmember Lim? I think some of the things that the staff has done really well is especially looking for Easy Ride is looking at the routes. How efficient are we being with the routes? When I came to Broomfield nine years ago tomorrow. One of the things that Easy Ride did not do is they did not go outside of the boundaries of Broomfield. And that was really creating some limitations for the folks that we were transporting. And so now we do go outside of the boundaries of Broomfield a little bit, but we're still looking for those opportunities to engage with other folks. And how do we get people to transport it down to the VA hospital and those type of things? So looking at those different operational efficiencies will be something that we'll continue to look at as we see that growing population.
Okay, that's great. I'm glad you're looking to meet the needs. You also said that you're working towards implementation of a new fee philosophy. And in conjunction with that, I wanted to ask, how is facility rental going with trying to bring in revenue?
I'd like to turn that over to Matt Gully, Recreation Superintendent.
Good evening. We are looking at an overall philosophy. We did a study in 2021 and 2022 where we actually worked with an outside company 110% to develop a philosophy that looked at all of our programs, all of our facilities and set them based on common good to individual use and kind of set what our cost recovery model would be for that. So we've looked at that. We look at our fees every single year to see how we compare to other, other municipalities that have similar amenities. And then we are looking, we'll look and see, are we in alignment? Are we not in alignment? Overall philosophy would be to increase fees to where we are in alignment because we are well under in a lot of specific areas. And then to every year, either have a small increase, three percent increase onto the fees moving forward, or do a study every two years so that we're reassessing every other year to find out, do we need a fee increase or should we be holding it steady?
Thank you. And then I had a specific question from a resident who would like to know if there are any plans to provide more pickleball courts in our public areas. He, he, he claimed, he claimed that at one time there were plans for, to put pickleball courts in a park. And I went back in the CIP plans that I could find back to, we have access to easily 21 or something. And I couldn't see where we had at any point had that in our CIP plans. But he, he claims it was there at one point.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Lim. We do have the outdoor courts at Broomfield Industrial Park, so we have those. We have the indoor courts at the Broomfield Community Center and as well as Paul Dura Recreation Center. There is future plans to have pickleball courts at Anthem Community Park as we continue to phase out that project. It would be on the west side, just kind of south of where the restrooms currently are. We would look at doing pickleball courts, tennis courts and a basketball court. And then in addition to that, we are suggesting to some of the developers that are coming in and doing projects that pickleball might be something that they look at as well for future development.
And you also have some of those tennis courts striped for pickleball as well, right?
We do have a few tennis courts that are striped for pickleball. Our biggest issue with it is that to run a USTA match on tennis courts, they do not allow any other lines. So those courts that we do utilize for USTA matches, we do not stripe. So we only stripe a little, a few of them and we stripe some of our outdoor basketball courts as well.
All right, Councilmember Lim.
That's it. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Lynn.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. From what I see, y'all have done a lot of good work, especially with the Bay, the renovations. I really appreciate the amount of amenities that we do. And I looked over the memo and one thing I did notice was the discussion on, on how a lot of the recreational programs are at near or at full capacity in most areas. And one was cited was that registrations were filled within 15 minutes. How can we maintain this level of engagement? And how can we expand on amenities that will get more youth engagement as well?
Great question. Thank you, Councilman Newman. I think, I think our struggle with some of it, the one that fills so quickly is always our Youth and Teen Program for our summer. And our issue there is capacity, truly capacity from the standpoint is we do not, we use, we utilize one of the schools for that program during the summer and we can only put so many kids in it. The other thing that we've ran into over the years is that as the schools tend to go back a little bit earlier, our time in those schools gets cut back as well. So I, I think next year we'd already, we just met with our, some of our IGA partners. And I think we're talking July 25th of next year is when the end of camp would be. And so that only gives us a very small period of time. So it's really a capacity issue. And the only way to do that would really would be to find a different building and, and that would take additional staff. And so, and really spread people out and that also includes transportation. There's a lot of other things that go along with that in the coordination of those camp programs. So I think right now we're just in a good position to continue to serve the residents that we had. We're not busting at the seams, but we are definitely filling up our classes on a pretty routine basis.
No, I really appreciate the answer and I think that that just captures how much amenities are available and how much of the demand there is. Obviously, capacity, you know, I totally understand. And I wish we had more available space and resources that we could provide to community residents. My next question is going to be about the open space acres have developed. For this year or for last 2024, it was 679 acres. And of course, it's been steadily increasing the last five years. How can we continue to develop acres? And I guess, is there going to be, you know, same issues, sustainability and capacity for the, you know, the division?
Thanks. Someone asked Ryan Jensen, our Park Superintendent, to answer that question.
Yeah.
Good evening. And once again, we've heard this a lot tonight, but that's an excellent question. And I think I have somewhat of a similar answer in that it's, it's truly a balance. We do have contract services for full services landscape and partial services landscape as well as our in-house operations. So the staff levels that Park Services is accommodated with at this point, once again, can balance with those contract services. So really looking forward, it's about the level of service that's provided. You could do a lesser level of service with the amount of staff or the amount of contract that you currently have. So, you know, the feedback that we get through the community survey from, from our user groups that tell us about the conditions that they see is enormously favorable. I'll pat my back a little bit. And, and our teams are incredibly valuable to provide those levels of service. So really that's the question is what is the standard that, that Broomfield expects its residents and users? And can we still provide that level of service? The acreage increase will continue, new development and, and, and new development and CIP projects will increase those acres over time. That's most likely not going to change and to see a negative in a year. So really it's, it's just that delicate balance. And I can say that the support that we get from our teammates and, and through finance and balancing and really giving us a chance for the requests that we have through the budget process has been extremely valuable. And, and so my answer would just be, you know, keeping that expectation that the community has and our staff has for level of service. Really to this point has worked out well. Yes, things get thinner over time. We, I think, you know, Clay talked about that with the recreation programs and senior services. But from a standpoint of the Park Services Superintendent, I'm very happy with, you know, our, our balance of dollars and staff and contract to acres at this point.
Thank you. No, I really appreciate the explanation and it gives me a lot of confidence. So thank you very much for your answer. Those are my questions, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Moving to Councilmember Leslie.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'm not sure if this is under your authority, but the county has had a program called Respite Care. Does that fall into your domain or is that?
Respite Care does fall in our senior services.
That's what I thought. So I just want to ask, I know that was a federal grant and I was able to take advantage of it when my wife became ill. Is that program going to be able to continue?
So far, we have received our funding through Dr. Cog for our next cycle. And so Respite Care, we are expecting to continue to be funded. At this point in time, we haven't heard anything different. And I'm just going to look at Nikki and make sure that's the case. And yeah. And yeah, so yeah, we have our contract already in place for the next fiscal year.
Because it was a lifesaver.
Yeah, it is a great program. It really gives that opportunity for folks that are dealing with a loved one and caring for them to get away for a minute and have some.
Well, go shopping. I was able to attend these meetings because I was able to have somebody watch Cheryl when, you know, so that allowed me to continue serving. But I'm concerned about all the federal cuts and that's why I'm asking the question. So thank you.
Yes, so far with Easy Ride and with Respite Care, we were able to receive our next level of funding, so.
But thank you.
Councilmember Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I just wanted to revisit the fee philosophy for a minute.
Sure.
Obviously, your programs are already subsidized, so we're not at actual cost. And the fee is necessary really to make sure people are committed to attending so you don't fill up slots with people who don't show and then people are denied. How do we reach a level where we're, you know, achieving efficiency in that sense, but not pricing out some of the lower income, particularly kids, so that they still have opportunities? How do you measure that? Or is there a program for those who truly cannot afford the opportunity to take advantage of these programs?
Yeah, thank you for that question, Councilmember Cohen. A couple of ways that we look at that, as one is we look at the market every year. So when we're doing our fee analysis that we do on an annual basis, we're also looking to see what the market can bear. Along with that, we do have a reduced fee program that people can apply for. And that gives them the opportunity that if somebody can't pay the fee that we currently have, they can do it at a lower cost.
And a discount, is it, do you mean?
It depends on the program. So it can vary based on the program.
Okay, so if anybody out there would like to do one of your programs but doesn't think they can afford the cost, they can.
The form is online. They can fill out the reduced rate on form online and then it gets submitted to staff.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And Mr. Shuck, you do have programs for middle school and high school kids for recreation passes. Is that correct?
We do. We had a grant that we received several years ago that we're still able to utilize where during the school year from three to five, they can come in without paying a fee and utilize the recreation centers.
Another great opportunity. Any other questions for, oh wait, I do have some questions. So, oh yes, I was told by, I was told the resident that I would ask this question, even though I think I know the answer to it. Is it possible to cut the soccer field turf shorter so that it's not so shaggy?
I'm going to answer the question. No, I'm not. I'm going to ask Ryan to ask that question because I do not have a good answer for that.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Great question, and it is something that we hear about periodically, not all the time. It is possible to mow a shorter height in the athletic fields. We actually do that at this point. The park turf is mowed at a certain height that is higher than we mow the athletic turf. We've exercised and looked at the option of mowing at a lower height. You do increase the stress of the turf when you go to those lower heights. Most of the facilities in the metro area that has lower mow heights than we do will have increased cost for maintaining the health of the turf, whether that's water, fertilization, or a combination of the two. It does ramp up the maintenance of those turf levels if you go lower. But we're always open to hear those feedback. And once again, I think we hear it periodically, but probably not enough to take a serious look at what that would look like for, you know, how it would affect staffing and cost.
Okay, well, I've encouraged this individual to, you know, provide comments to the Park Recreation and Senior Services Board, provide those in that context, because I do know that there's many users that are engaged with that group. So I think that's a good piece. It does sound like that there is budget consideration for that lower turf as well. So I can bring that back to them. You know, and on a positive side, and this may have something to do with it as well, it does seem that the turf conditions have improved over this last spring and this summer. So it seems like that, you know, that there's been a great diligence in terms of mitigating disease, mitigating pests from these turf fields and things like that. So great work on that. It does seem like there are many more fields that are in optimal condition or high condition. So kudos to you and your team.
Absolutely wonderful to hear. Thank you very much.
All right, any other questions, comments for this department? Seeing none, we will move on to our, thank you so much for being here. And we will move on to our last departments, the Police Department.
Mayor Protam, the chief has promised all of those PD that have stayed this long, each one of them would like to, am I correct, chief? Each one would like to come up and have a round robin of Q and A?
Yes.
Excellent.
Well, on that note, chief, please introduce yourself and you can either introduce your staff or they can introduce themselves.
Okay, I'm Anaya Hembleman, Chief of Police, and thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. I have my command staff way in the back there. They have the stars on their collars and DC Plunkett, who's undercover apparently, and my Chief of Staff, and then Commander Waltz with the Texas hat, as we call him, and then my budget team in the back row. So thank you all for being here.
Excellent. Well, thank you for being here. Looked at my council colleagues, any questions, comments for this department? I'll lead us off. So, you know, I note Mayor Castro is not here. You know, I'll give her some kudos on this. She's been a major proponent of the Broomfield Police Department over the years. She's been a champion of increasing staffing levels. She's been, you know, a champion for securing life and safety equipment. She's attended roll calls, speaking at multiple first responder events and signing many proclamations. As you know, she and I started on council in 2017 together and we've served for the last eight years together. We know that with budget constraints, one area to cushion the impact of those budget constraints is to delay hiring of replacements for retirements and resignations. As we have worked, you know, myself and the rest of council have worked so hard to ensure that those numbers continue to stay fully staffed, that the Broomfield Police Department stays fully staffed. I don't want to see those slip. So will we continue to be fully staffed in 2026? And do your officers and staff members have the resources that they need to fully serve the city and county of Broomfield?
Great question. Yes, I think we're doing really well. You know, just yesterday I was talking to Ms. Hoffman and we were talking about the last four years and how we've really been set up for success. As you know, without getting into the entire budget for 2025, one of the things that I asked for this year was a lot of civilian positions. And what I mean by that is for them to support the sworn staff. And so that was really our final step. And of course, we reevaluate every single year, but I think we're at a really good point in the Police Department. And just last week at my council updates, I believe Ms. Hoffman shared that we are, for the first time in four years, fully staffed for operations for police officers, which is amazing and unheard of.
Well, that's great to hear and I'm glad to see that we aren't slowing down in terms of that continued push to be fully staffed. We have a new police building, you know, coming online hopefully soon. And that will provide some more resources there in terms of just some space for all of your officers to conduct their business. So thank you for the good work that you do. We'll head over to Councilmember Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Not a lot of questions because we just saw you.
Good timing, right?
Good timing. But one thing I know you get asked a lot, I hear a lot, I'm sure everybody does when they go door to door, is speeding on residential streets. And I raised this question when the traffic safety folks were here this week and they have this very big plan for how to reduce intersections where most of our accidents occur and usually fatal because of their head-ons, et cetera. They didn't have a lot in there about using police to reduce speeding and traffic accidents. And my question was, is there any value to emphasizing police and traffic safety reduction, accident reduction by being more visible? And I say that because I do hear from people like, well, you know, that you probably hear it too. This happened, this person was speeding and there's never a cop there. How do you address the question of visibility, patrolling? How are you attacking the issue of residential speeding, which fills up next door and every other platform?
Yeah, well, and the presence is number one. And that's why we have kind of a model in Broomfield to make sure that we have marked units. In reference to how do we address that, when we have a citation or anytime that we're doing proactive measures, we pull that data. And you've all heard me say this, I don't want to sound like a broken record, but really is that data analysis to say, what does the speed survey show? So we actually work really closely with engineers when we get a complaint or when we're working proactively to say, what are the average speeds on this street? And do we need to be more present, more proactive with summonses? What we don't know is how much our presence is actually causing people to slow down. I remember years and years ago, I was doing radar enforcement and someone said, just say no, everyone who's coming down the street sees you and flash their lights. And I said, perfect. Then that slows them down and that's keeping our community safe. So to answer your question, it really is multi-pronged. We all have to work together for the, to keep our community safe.
Some communities have bait police, they just put a car and they sit it there. Not even an officer in it has the same effect.
Same theory, yeah.
I know it must be frustrating. I was talking to someone the other day at the door and he said, oh, the police, I mean, it's bad, the crime is bad, I got my car stolen. And then he related that he had left the keys in it while it was running and he'd run in. So he eventually admitted maybe some of the fault was his, but I know that you have education efforts on that as well.
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Councilmember Win.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Chief, we really appreciate the work that you and your team has done. And obviously, you know, the metrics that you've presented, which is crimes going down, employment for all of our police department is hopefully, fingers crossed, at capacity. And again, I asked you this question last year as well with the budget, but how do we maintain this? How do we maintain the levels of professionalism, AKA with levels of staff members, members of our law enforcement? How do we maintain, you know, trending the crime rates down?
Yeah, that's the work. That's why we exist, right, is to make sure that our community is safe. And that's where we have, I mean, we have almost 300 employees at our police department. And it's everyone coming together to make sure that that data, I mean, I keep saying this, but that data-driven policy that we have and just working together to make sure that we get that information to say, where do we need to be proactive? We evaluate everything in the Police Department. We're trying really hard these days not to have a meeting to have a meeting and just to really communicate well. So the work continues with the promotion of Deputy Chief Clement's replacement. That'll cause us to have to hire a backfill if that's an internal promotion. So the work will continue, recruiting efforts will continue, the mental health initiatives that I talk about to make our officers well so that they're well when they go into the community, so that they have that positive contact and not a negative, you know, you've seen it on the news, right? So that's the work. And that's why we have our command staff. And that's why I saw tonight that we were talking about with DEI, the leadership at all levels. We teach that, we talk about that, we have mentorship programs. I know I've shared a lot about all these things. And that's really the work is for us to come together as a team and to make sure that our staff knows expectations, but also knows that we're there for them and mentoring them as well.
Of course. And Chief Hallman, one last question is, one of the priorities for 2026 that I saw was investing in, I guess, not professional development, but like just well-being. What does that look like for officers' well-being in 2026?
Yeah, well, as you know, I created a wellness officer position and I'm passionate about that. But the well-being is everything because that will translate to our community. So sadly, good and bad, our psychological services have increased. So that well-being means that they're utilizing that service more. It also means that we're doing more initiatives within the Police Department, everything from barbecues to if you come to the Police Department right now, there's a puzzle and it's massive and there's I don't know how many pieces to the puzzle. And the goal is to have someone write something positive about anything that they feel today, anything words of wisdom, and then to put that puzzle up to show, this is what members of this organization have said that will help us. We have a wellness room now. It's just a very quiet room. It was a closet conference room that we turned into a wellness room. It just has like a cozy chair. If you need just a few minutes, you go take a breather. So there's initiatives that we're doing internally and that our wellness officer is working closely with myself and the deputy chief to make sure that the employees know that we are here for them as a resource. And we know there's bad days. We've had a lot of bad days this year. And just a month ago, we had an officer that was stabbed. That takes a toll on the department. So that's where those wellness efforts come into effect.
No, Chief Hallman, again, and of course, your command staff and to your fellow, you know, staff members as well, thank you so much. Thank you so much for being here. Obviously, I really appreciate the work you do and those are my questions, Mayor Protam.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments for this, for the Police Department? All right, seeing none. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
And that concludes all of our departments today. So thank you for the presentations and the information. And just a moment of privilege, you know, Manager Hoffman, Attorney Rogers, Judge Bachman out in the ether, you know, you, for the second meeting in two weeks, two budget department meetings, your staff have continued to impress me. You all continue to lead with intelligence, care, and grace. You all lead with integrity and with honor. And Broomfield is better because of your employment and I thank you for choosing this community for your service. So thank you all for everything. And thank you all for spending two extra meetings with us in the last two weeks. So thank you. That concludes the agenda items for this evening's study session. Is there any other business to come before council for my council colleagues or staff? Seeing none, there's no other business. The study session is adjourned.